All right, we'll call the board of commissioners to order please. We'll have the adoption of agenda with a motion. Oh, wait a minute, oh, roll call.
Mayor Owens?
Here.
Mayor Protim Selby? Commissioner Borland? Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Mann? Commissioner Stetson?
Here.
Commissioner Wexstrom?
Here.
Okay, we have, we do have a call. All right, can we have a motion for having adoption of the agenda, please?
And Mr. Mayor, I've provided you all with some information in an email yesterday about amending the agenda. So if y'all could look at your sample motions for that, because we'll need to include the policies that I sent over to you that are also printed for you as well.
All right, words. Just formally.
And so what you would be doing is you're amending the agenda to add the word "and" in policies to item 7A grant ordinance, grant project ordinance and policies for the Town of Manio American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. So it would be later in your agenda, but there, along with that ordinance, there are these five policies that we need to have you all adopt to be in compliance with the CARES Act.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
All right, is a second.
A second.
Is the motion second for adoption of agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion cares. We have a motion for consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, consent agenda is approved. Okay, Melissa.
Okay, the next item on your agenda, 4A, is employee service award. Jamie, do you mind taking a picture when I? Oh, you got it, okay, cool. First, I'll do a little introduction and then we'll get up and I'll offer the award. So the service award is for Robbie Norman. It's for five years. Robbie and I actually started working for the town during the same year, which is a good note. Robbie is dedicated and hardworking and things that I appreciate most about Robbie is he always has a story to tell. But my favorite thing about him is that he is so consistent that whenever he asks how you are doing, it doesn't stop there. He asks about your family members as well. So I will grab the other microphone and do this presentation, but Robbie, you know that you are a valued member of our work family.
Robbie, how are you?
No, looking, he's looking good. He really is.
Come on up here, Robbie.
How y'all doing?
Good, how are you?
I never seen you.
Hi, everyone.
I'm new to this. I haven't been to this place in a while.
I'm new.
Oh, here. Oh, turning, okay.
Yeah, mind your Ps and Qs, Robbie.
All right. I've never seen him.
He's here at every meeting. That's a good thing. Okay, so this says, presented to Robbie Norman in deep appreciation and heartfelt thanks for five years of dedicated and loyal service to the Town of Manio this 20th day of April 2022.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now, you hold, hold the bottom, there we go.
Robbie, now you got to make a talk.
You can do that.
Really?
No. You can't?
No, no. That's up to you.
Oh. I don't need that.
I know.
When I got a job, when I worked with the county and I seen Mr. Jamie Police, whatever, they gave me an opportunity and at this point, it was the best opportunity I had and everything just fell in place. So like I said, again, hard work and everything pays off in the end.
It does. And we appreciate you for your hard work, Robbie. Thank you.
So I do appreciate it. Everybody is, it's all love, you know what I mean? Well, everybody goes to different things, you know, especially me driving a truck, whatever. Sorry for the moles in the morning and with the can and messing with whatever, but it only gets better, it only gets better. So I really appreciate this right here and it's all love, everybody.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, item 4B on the agenda is department head reports.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Matt Task, Mayor of this department. In March, I attended the criminal crime prevention council meeting. Also attended the Region 10 North Carolina Chiefs Association. It's the regional conference at COA here in Dare. Also attended a special event tabletop exercise training at Dare County Emergency Management. Lieutenant Eiler attended countywide investigators meeting hosted by the Dare County Sheriff's Office. He also instructed a block of instruction for general instructor training at COA in Elizabeth City. Investigator Moore attended Introduction to Hostage Negotiations at the North Carolina Justice Academy in Edneyville. Investigator Corbin attended intoxicilizer certification at NAGS Head PD. Attended standard field sobriety testing certification at NAGS Head PD. Officer Deaton attended advanced traffic crash training at the North Carolina Justice Academy in Salemburg. Officer Rhodes attended general instructor training at COA in Elizabeth City. Officer Lassen attended field sobriety testing certification at NAGS Head PD. Also, he is our newest officer and he has just been released from field training, so we are finally at full staff. It's been a long, long time, but we're finally there. Officer Grogan attended standard field sobriety testing certification at NAGS Head PD as well. In March, we had three accidents, 11 arrests, 28 citations. Fifteen of those citations were speeding. We had 30 investigations. Twenty-eight of those investigations have been closed and cleared. Two are still active and open. For the month of March, we had 1,661 self-initiated calls, 142 dispatched, with a total of 1,803 calls for March. And that's all I have. Y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief.
I have one question. We got an email from Bob Keeney, a citizen in town, that mentioned, since we're talking about budget tonight, that you guys might want or there might be discussion about a second radar device. What's the device that announces our speed?
What we were looking at is we have run into a little bit of a snag. Our radar trailer, you know, when we put it out, it's a little bit wide, so it's part of the trailer goes on, has to go on someone's property. We can't get it all and get it off the road and get it off safely enough to make sure nobody runs over it or hits it. And in the beginning, it wasn't an issue, but here lately, we've had folks complain they don't want it in front of their house. They don't want it, the tire in their yard because they need to mow their grass. We had one complaint that it's too bright and it shines in their window at night and keeps them up. So I'm looking now at getting radar signs. They do the same thing, but we don't have to ask for anybody's permission to put them up. We can actually put them on a speed limit sign.
Okay.
They're cheaper, too. I mean, a radar trailer is around $15,000 where these signs, you can get them for about anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000. So that's sort of where we're leaning to right now. And it, you know, it does help slow people down, but the best part about it is it gives us statistics, you know, exactly what time of day people are speeding, how fast they're going, of course. That way, the officers have a better idea to know what time to be out there to try to catch the speeders.
That's smart. Okay.
So the signs, do you think they would calm the traffic like the trailer would? I mean visually and?
Yeah, pretty much the same because it, you know, you'll have your speed limit sign there with what you're supposed to be going. It flashes how fast the person is actually going. We can actually remotely set it up where we can have blue lights strobing off of the sign if they're speeding. But of course, if, you know, from some of the complaints that we got, they might not want us to do that because it might be too bright. But yeah, it calms, I don't know if you've been through, you know, Southern Shores and Duck has some of them. You know, they're utilizing and they've probably ran into the same situation that we're running into now about certain folks not wanting the radar trailer. There's still a few places we can put the radar trailer and don't have any issues. We put it at Cartwright Park, we don't have any issues. People don't complain. At the, in Wingina, that little turnoff right there before the high school, that's where it's at right now. We don't ever have any complaints there because, you know, it's not really on anybody's property in that, but it's getting to the point now where one of the main places we want to put the radar trailer, we can't, which, you know, statistically speaking, Upper Walk Extended has shown to be the worst street for speeding that we have gotten the statistics from so far since we've been putting the trailer out.
How many of those signs do you think you would need for them to be effective?
Well, I would like to get probably two or three at least. That would, you know, that way we could have them at different areas. You can still move them, you know, it's a little bit more labor intensive, you know, you'll have to unbolt it, they come with you. You have to get a solar pack, you'll have to change the batteries. But that would probably do the trick, two or three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, what I'd suggest is, and I hope the board agrees, I think to do the way they're talking, is you and the manager be in conversation and work out something between maybe, I'm not going to say how many, it'd be up to Sheri, whoever, Ruth Jane, and work on these signs and see what you can work out, cost and all that, and how fast to take to get them. All the logistics, you and town manager should work that out between yourselves and then she'll bring it back to the board and we'll decide.
Absolutely.
And Mayor, we're working on including that in his budget requests.
Oh, great. Great. Yeah.
Flip flop that around a little bit. Starting with service installations and operations billing snapshot for the month of March. Numbers show that in March, we had a higher number of water meter boxes and lids that were required to be raised due to damage, which goes along with the start of mowing season. Along the same lines, we raised three sewer cleanouts during the same time. 811 locates showed about the same amount as February, 38, though we do expect that number to rise throughout the spring and summer. Meter replacements are rising back up to what we expect them to be right there at, let's see, I don't have that number right there in front of me without getting off track, but meter numbers are coming back up for what we budgeted for with the battery issues that I've already told the board about and for which we budgeted for this current fiscal year, but overall, an average month for March. Staff number, excuse me, slide number two, as I like to do, have a little photo collage. Staff completed quarterly wet well cleaning for Cedar Bay and Cypress Cove sewer pump stations, which are both shown on the bottom left two pictures of the slide. Not very exciting, but very necessary. We had the pump technician for Cedar Bay help us reprogram the pump controller for the station, which will hopefully increase the pump life on those two pumps that we had to replace at the station, which was in the department head report. Also, the top two pictures on the slide show a water service leak that we had. Unfortunately, in this neighborhood, the water main is under the curb, so we had to cut the sidewalk to get down to the service to replace the service and of course, with that water service replacement came the replacement of concrete. So I thought that would be good to include the slide to show that not every, you know, water leak that we have is, you know, out in the street, not every water leak that we have is in, you know, a right of way or in grass. Really, it just depends on what neighborhood where that can occur. The bottom right picture shows the fire hydrant at Sir Walter Raleigh Street and Queen Elizabeth Avenue. Pretty proud of this one. Staff stripped the paint all the way down to bare metal and primed it, painted it back in March. As you can see, these little details, the devil's in the details, people say, but the little detail that impresses me the most is the top there. You can actually see that the metal shining, which is how the hydrant was originally intended to be used. So just little details to see as you're walking around in Manio. This year, in painting the hydrants, the guys are focusing on, if possible, stripping down the paint where dogs have defaced several years of other paint coatings, to say it nicely in a public meeting. But again, really proud of, you know, how that looks and represents the department. Finally, wrapping up with employee certification in March, Troy Faulkner and Cameron Morris both passed their grade one collections exams, which certifies them to operate any grade one sewer collection system in the state of North Carolina. And Johnny Lee passed his written and both driving tests for his B Commercial Driver's License. So very proud of all three staff members, very excited to, that the board generously provides that amount in our budget to further their career development and of course, the approved career development plan. So we have a great staff, really proud of them. They do fabulous work and hopefully we can keep that up. If there are no further questions, any questions, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Good evening. Frankie Woody, Public Works Director. For the month of March, we performed ditch maintenance in Roanoke Village, behind the Cook House, behind the Source Church, along Agun extended, around the Public Works complex. And we also installed yellow, we also installed yellow and blue floodlights out in front of Town Hall to support the situation going on in Ukraine. We picked up trash and debris within the cemetery and assisted diverting technician and synchronizing the downtown clock and bell. Thank you.
Compass to y'all, Frankie, on the Ukrainian lights, to your crew.
Okay, next is the planning department. So in March, Park did not meet because they had no submittals to review. Last week, the planning board met as the leadership group for the comprehensive plan and they reviewed the comments that the community had sent in about the plan. And so the group, the consultants from Stewart will be back in, at their next month's meeting, in their May meeting, to present the plan to the planning board so they can make their recommendation to you all and it'll come to you all in June. So we are working through all the required notifications for that. I was on the phone with them today, following up from last week's planning board meeting. The planning board also reviewed and approved landscaping and lighting plans for the Old Tom project, which was, of course, was a condition that you all recommended in the condition or in the special use permit. And then today, staff met with Ms. Creef again and they are going to be applying for the demolition permit soon. So they're, they're working to move forward in that regard. And then hopefully, they'll have some building sketches to take to Park either in May or June. They're working towards that. So I am preparing a grant application to the Golden Leaf Foundation for the West Side Stormwater Project. I sent a preliminary email to Golden Leaf and told them about the general area and they replied back that they, that they were very interested in seeing an application from us. So I've continued to work with Alba Marl and Associates on getting that together. Of course, for the comprehensive plan, we reviewed the comments submitted by the community and continue working on that. The Davis Lot improvements are well underway. It's looking good. And it's very exciting to see that come to shape. And then Town Common Phase Two, of course, the foundation has, the bricks for the foundation have been installed and things continue to move forward there as well. Are there any questions for me as the planner? Thank you.
When do you expect your planner to arrive and build more?
I am happy to answer that. So we, so in the, the tentative start date was next Monday for the planner to get here. He did secure housing and his lease does not begin until the beginning of May, so it'll likely be the first or second week of May that he arrives, but I'm super excited. And he signed his lease last week, so he's coming soon. Yes. Thank you.
Hello, Barry Wicker, Waterfront Operations. On the Maritime Museum side, we are continuing to work on our equipment and everything for our summer sailing camp. With the good weather we had last week, we got out and did some work on our shad boat, got some paint on it. Our sailing camp begins June 13th. And the reason I say that every meeting is because after every meeting, I have three or four people sign up. So somebody must be watching these videos. And volunteer hours for the month was 120 hours, so it's a value of about $2,800 for their labor. Still got a good group of volunteers. On the marina side, we had 12 transient boats visit the marina last month. Revenue there is around a little bit over $3,000. We have a new annual boater who signed up for the marina last month. His annual revenue is $3,600 and bookings are really strong for the summer. So it looks like we're going to have a good summer. And based on all the people who have been downtown for the last two weeks, I think summer is already here. So anyway, that's all I have. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Barry.
Hi, I'm Heather Doughty, your finance director, and we are well into budget season. So we have, all of the, all of the departments have given their budget request to me and we are going to be going through them. I was in them today, so hopefully we will iron out anything that we need to, I think, by the end of this week and have those out. We did a budgeting workshop with the board and you guys were able to kind of give us some great ideas and projects to work on the budget for this upcoming year on. We also have tons of guidance on our ARP funding now from the School of Government, from a class that we attended last, last week or the week before. And I went to an elders employer reporting training because I am new to reporting for Orbit and that was very exciting for me because I was able to see on a financial side how we're able to improve some things on our processes to be better with the state. And most importantly, I'm super excited that Kim has been able to welcome me in and Ms. Sheri, just to be able to keep the finance department going smoothly during my transition. So I think that's it. So did you guys have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Woody, the IT Director. Again, I started all my slides with a cybersecurity training that we started. So this one was called Watering Hole Attacks and it's basically an attack that attacks a particular organization. And the video example this month, it was about a, an employee visited a website, thought they were logging into the website, prompted to install an update, that update infected the computer and that computer shut down a 911 system. So the biggest thing is, you know, anybody can be a target. Watering hole attacks, they target individuals with the same group, organization and industry. In this case, it was a 911 center. Scrutinize every link. I mean, I'm sure people have seen emails that come and say, click here to get your $200 Walmart card or whatever it may be. It's most likely some sort of spam. So always use caution whenever you're promoted by an unsolicited link. So that means, you know, you just get an email in and say, click here. So again, the third is always verify the source, meaning always make sure your antivirus or your endpoint security is current, up to date and always visit websites that are widely used. You know, if you go to these one-off websites, there's more prone of them to being infected with malware and so forth. So it's pretty interesting, but that's it for the training that we had that month. So the second slide here, we're working on the Maritime Museum kiosk. So we've completed the boat racing video. We have the shad boat video working on, an updated weather tower one, an updated net shed, boat building in Manio and then Manio during World War II. We're almost done with the Manio and World War II, so hopefully that'll be done sometime this month. And there's a lot of things that I've learned that, you know, what Manio did during World War II to help support the country. So it's going to be an interesting video. So right here, I've got the boat building video for you.
At the turn of the 20th century, my great-grandfather, George Washington Creef Jr., built and raced the first raceboat in Dare County, the Dodger. By the mid 1930s, other families on Roanoke Island were involved and then there were others who were purchasing boats from out of the area, such as my great-uncle Herbert Creef. His Miss Manio, too, was a Ventnor 225 cubic inch hydroplane and it won many championships for him in sanctioned races.
I fell in love with boat racing. Probably my first exposure to it was when a local fellow, Gary Doughty, was test running his hydroplane out on Shalabag Bay and I was sitting on the front porch watching that and thought, wow, that looks like that'd be a lot of fun. Before long, we set up having Sunday afternoon races out here on the Manio waterfront and you line up, you would kind of mill around in the back of the creek and then there'd be a big clock out on the dock and the idea was to cross that starting line right at the time it gets to zero. And if you get there too fast, you get disqualified and if you get there too late, you lose.
Sanctioned races were races that were for championships and for speed. Non-sanctioned races were more friendly and were more for fun. The course was a one and one-half mile oval in Shalabag Bay and oftentimes, the boats would run from three to five laps.
There were two classes when you step on up the line from the family racing that we had here. When you go up the line to APBA racing, you had like class A through F and each class going down the line from A was a higher horsepower, bigger boat. Fun of racing that we had in this community in Roanoke Island, you can't measure that.
So that's just going to be one of the videos that are going to be on that kiosk that people can learn about what's happened in the past and, you know, in Manio. I enjoy doing these because I'm learning a lot of things that I didn't know about, you know, and it's.
Well, how many in you remember those races? Every one of them?
So it's neat stuff, so, I mean, I enjoy doing these videos.
That's nice.
So that's all I got. Any other questions?
Yeah. Can they bring racing back or not allow them?
I don't think so. I don't think they'd allow them.
I don't think I'm qualified to answer that question.
In the first place, these boats today are too fast from Shalabag, but they'd be up and down and they're cycling.
Okay, that's all.
Thanks, Carl. That concludes the department head reports.
Go ahead.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any improper to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on any items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
All right, we'll open for the comment period. Would anybody like to be heard? Would anybody like to come forth to be heard? Public comment period. Hearing no one or seeing no one? Melissa?
Yes, sir. Item number six on your agenda is budget public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on the topic of the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Budget public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
This is hot and unusual, but, uh, would anyone like to be heard at the budget time?
Mayor, we had one person reach out to us, Robert Keeney. Uh, we had one person reach out to us, Robert Keeney. Um...
Oh, yeah. If you want to talk about it, go ahead. I think it's good.
Yeah, um, he had three different points. I don't know if it's reasonable to say those out loud. I mean, he's not here, but he did...
I don't think he was speaking for me.
Yeah.
I don't think he lied to you. Ben?
I don't believe you see any problem with it. This isn't the actual hearing on the budget.
Sure, go ahead. I think it's a good idea.
It is?
Yes.
Yeah. I was going to see if I...
I have it available. If you, would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Keeney's email states, "Board of Commissioners and Mayor Owens, I am not able to be at the Wednesday meeting, but I wanted to provide the board with a few suggested additions to the 2022-2023 budget. Traffic radar devices. Speeding within the town has become a real concern to citizens. Police have one radar device which, which when deployed on a street seems to reduce speeding. I suggest that the board approve the purchase of additional, more portable freestanding devices that can be used especially on streets adjacent, adjacent to schools, churches, and parks. Such devices are being used by other towns on the outer banks. In addition to reducing speed in the areas frequented by children, the data collected will also assist the police in selecting areas that need greater police presence." The next topic is Manio Recreation Park. In the next few years, the College of the Albemarle will need the land that is now used as baseball, football, and soccer fields and skate park. The possibility of affordable housing on Bowser Town Road and elsewhere will likely bring additional children to the community who will need recreation facilities. I recommend that the Board of Commissioners allocate sufficient funds to conduct, along with the county, a needs assessment study, and to designate county slash town land for future location of such park that will replace the COA facilities. Basketball court, bike trail, pickleball, and tennis courts for adults could also be included. The third topic is street intersections. Several of the town's street intersections are dangerous due to limited sightlines. Because streets are narrow, it is often difficult to see cars approaching. Not only are car drivers in danger, but pedestrians, cyclists, and skateboarders and others. This has been a topic of discussion for many years. I suggest that the town approach NC DOT officials to gain their support and approval for four three-way stops at some of the most dangerous intersections. These include Agona and Uppowak, Sir Walter Raleigh and Uppowak, and a three-way stop on Budley and Wingina. This is not a major budget item, but street signs and street lining would be required. Thank you for, your, thank you for considering these suggestions for inclusion in the upcoming budget. I appreciate your time, Bob Keeney.
Do you have any other in...
No, sir. That's the only comment that I've received.
Well, this is just public comment period anyhow.
It is.
You read it. So, we'll, would anybody else like to be heard? Would anybody else like to be heard? We'll now close the public comment period for the budget. Go ahead.
The next item on your agenda is item 7A. Um, this is new business, and it is the grant project ordinance and policies for the Town of Manio American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Um, so, Heather mentioned in her, um, staff report to you all that we attended a training, um, I believe it was on the 11th, um, with the School of Government. And so, the School of Government has provided, um, to municipalities and counties, um, templates of documents that you all need to adopt. And so, that is what we have given to you all. There's, there's six documents before you for approval. Um, it is the ordinance and then the five policies. Um, and these are all just, these are a requirement to be compliant with, um, with receiving those funds. Um, we are also required, um, to, um, submit a report by the end of the month. And Heather has been spending a lot of time, um, getting up to speed very quickly on, on the requirement for that report. Um, we have some technical issues that we are working with the Department of Treasury, um, to work through. Um, James had an account, um, and Heather and I do not, so we have to, we have to file tickets with their IT folks in order to get access to the reporting, um, portal. So, um, we are working on that, and I assure you that we will keep the heat on, um, until we can. But the, we would need you all to approve the, the documents that we've submitted to you tonight.
Is it, is it ready tonight?
What you all have, yes, sir, is.
Okay. How would we do this? Would we take them separate or would we take them together?
Well, the motion that I suggested was that you approve the grant project ordinance and policies. Um, unless Ben objects, I think that would be sufficient.
Ben, what do you think?
I think that's fine. I always, people always ask, can we approve all these things together, or do we have to separate them? And my answer usually is, depends on whether or not you think it'll pass.
We're going to do it so it'll be easier.
Yeah, if you, it, it's just a question of whether or not you think it'll pass. If, if you think all of them pass together, then, then go for it. That's always what it comes down to for me in terms of breaking...
Have you got a, a motion form that you'd suggest?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, so, the motion would be to approve the grant project ordinance and policies for the Town of Manio American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
All right, you've heard the motion. Uh, I think, okay, this motion has been moved. Is there a second?
Hello?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, uh, been moved and seconded that we approved the grant project, uh, Rescue Plan Act, whatever it read by Melissa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye, is having. Motion carries.
Melissa, I sympathize with you. Trying to get you a, um, DIT so you can answer soon.
Yeah.
Maybe send you a CID and all that stuff.
So, I, I have a SAM and, um, uh, now login.gov. I have all of them, but the new one, this, this, um, ID me that I did today is not linked with the town. So, we had to do a ticket in order for them to, it's, yeah.
Give them those, pray they can all that.
That's right, yeah. So, I'm, I'm lost in the bureaucracy right now, but we're going to fix it. Um, Mayor, the next item on your agenda is mayor and commissioner comments.
All right, I, I'm going to bring up something, and this is just, I don't know if y'all hear me or not, this is just a toy idea. Don't know if, I don't even want to ask for a motion, but, you know, I went through Manio today, and the parking lot was totally, absolutely packed full. Uh, you could not find another parking space in town. And it's wonderful that there's so many people here, I think. A lot of people don't agree with me. They don't want nobody here. But, uh, how nice it would be for us to think about maybe two or three trams, like you've seen in other little, uh, recreational areas, six passenger golf carts, so people could get on and off wherever they wanted to, paint them pink, paint them blue, paint them yellow, have a handicap driver or college student talking about Manio, let people, like I say, jump on and off wherever they wanted to, take them around town. And they could really utilize Festival Park and other places. Uh, I just think it'd be nice. I see it in my eyes, and that's all. I was just going to suggest it. Might want to think about it, might not. Uh, just a novel idea of maybe two or three trams riding around in town, putting on people and taking off people. That's all I got. Ready?
Okay. Um, first I want to say to the chief who's gone, I'm glad that we got a full department, uh, with increased traffic in downtown Manio and the nu, uh, number of visitors. It's good and it's comforting to know that we have a full staff. And I wanted to say to Robbie, congratulations. Sometimes you're the first on the scene. We appreciate that, and Frankie and his whole department. Anyway, that's it.
Ruth Jay?
Um, Robbie, it's nice to meet you. Was he the guy, when you told the funny ditch story, was that Robbie?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so. I was like, that's that guy. Um, uh, I think, yeah, one thing for the, um, the budget concerns is, uh, obviously, I like the idea of staying competitive salary-wise, and I think we all agree on that. Um, I, I like the idea of the golf carts. I've visited an area around Laguna Beach in California that is an island like our Roanoke Island, but smaller, and it all has 100% lot coverage. Like, the houses are built completely on top of each other. The streets are not navigable, so they were forced to go to golf carts. So, I like the idea of us alleviating some congestion early on a much larger island with golf carts. Um, I think it, it could present some cool tour opportunities, too, which is nice for our young people. Um, one other thing that isn't necessarily budget-related, but I've been talking to, um, so I talked to a lot of youth, and one big thing that I kept hearing, and I'm going to talk to Carl about, we're scheduling a meeting, it's spring break, though I know that's crazy. Um, the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill has a debate society called DFI, the Dialectic and Philanthropic Society. Um, they host debates. I had the opportunity to mentor, uh, their historian at her senior year here at our, at First Flight High School. Um, a lot of my students are Manio students, and there was a lot of interest in a debate class at Manio High School. Um, I met with a few teachers. They, they tried to assemble something. Um, there was some, some effort needed in developing a curriculum. Um, obviously, that's not our area, that's the board's area, but here's where it crosses over. Um, our young people would like to have some kind of debate. So, in speaking to DFI, they would like to come to our school system and host a debate, walk through what a debate looks like, um, and host a mock debate, um, that's representative of their competition team here in our school system. And I thought that perhaps if, um, if COA, obviously, COA has great facilities, that would be a great choice. But if not, maybe the Town of Manio would be an interesting place for them to practice with, um, smaller groups that could, they, they would essentially come for a week and, um, have some kind of, uh, dialogue where they learn in a classroom style setting. That, that has a nice vibe. So, I thought this would be an interesting facility. Um, but obviously, the school system has the final say on that. But I did want to mention that it is, it's coming up amongst our youth. I'm hoping that the Board of Education will get on board because, um, our young people are really interested in learning how to articulate themselves in ways that, uh, we're not seeing on the public, on the larger scale in debates. Modern debates don't look like traditional debates look. Traditional debates are, um, hmm, what's the word? They have more decorum, I suppose. They don't get, they don't get personal. They argue and hear each other out. So, um, young people are very interested in that. So, in sidelining to that, I, um, found, I've been thinking a lot about a conversation I had with Betty and a lot of our local youth about how do they stay out of trouble? And what would keep young people out of trouble? It's keeping them busy. I talked to a lot of parents, and they keep their kids busy. The ones that do are scared to death of them not being busy for what, what might happen. Um, because this place can be quiet in the winter and very, you know, it's something. It's a beautiful place to live, but it's something. So, I, um, I found that in North Carolina, under our general statutes, um, 143B dash 387, our state formed what's called a state youth council, uh, about 40 years ago. And they exist in High Point, Greensboro, and Raleigh. These are shadow councils for municipalities. So, they're like a shadow government for us, essentially. They're elected, um, they're from within our school system, and they are, um, they then work up a branch system to one that's headed by the governor, um, that is the state youth council. So, there's little trickle-down ones that essentially are through smaller governing bodies. The cost is $50 a year that you pay into a youth endowment fund. So, it is budget-related. But, um, it's something that I would like to send this document out to all of us, our lawyer and our manager, and have, get it, get your eyes on it and see what you guys think. Um, when I brought it up to a sample group of young people, they, of course, said, yeah, we want to be in the room where it happens. It's that Hamilton line. They can recite every word from Hamilton. So, these kids, like, it's, it's interesting. So, um, I thought that a way to show that we're a town looking forward, obviously, we care about our tourist industry, but we also care about our people. Um, I thought it would be an interesting way to show them that, um, we're looking forward, and maybe it would get eyes of some of these, these jobs that are looking this way as some of our tech infrastructure is being developed. It's kind of a puzzle piece to a macro vision that I'm thinking of our area. So, I just wanted to say, bring that up, circulate this document to you guys, see what you think. Um, it is something that's, um, doing really well in our state. It's the Council for Women and Youth Involvement. It's part of the Department of Administration. And, uh, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Sharon?
Yes. Um, so, I like the idea about, uh, transporting people around town as well. And maybe we could do like an initial, like a demonstration project or something like that, so that we can get our, our, um, our hands around how many golf carts we need or how many trams. And trams come in many different shapes and sizes, as you know. I think it's a great idea. And it may, um, it may change, you know, as, um, time goes on, and the need there is here. So, I, I think it's a great idea.
I thought it'd be a great idea, but I, go ahead. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to...
No, that's okay. Um, yeah, so, I, I, I just think we should do an initial or a demonstration project first to find out what works, what doesn't work, um, what kind of vehicles we might need, maybe different kinds. But I really like the idea, and it's, I feel like it's time to do something like this, um, especially because we've got the, um, Main Street America program starting in, um, July. We already know that our visitation is so up. Um, it, it has increased so much. And I, I don't think it's going to slow down. I think it's going to accelerate. Yeah. So, I, I think a demonstration project would be really good in this area, and then we'd get some good information about how to move forward financially.
To add to your conversation, which I appreciate your thoughts, you know, uh, I got to say about, I've been to a few areas where they had the tram system, and it's pretty neat. People talk to each other, and they get together. But more than anything else, DOT has started, State DOT has got a project started in Oakville, where this fast-speed ferry goes to Oakville, and the trams pick up the people and take them around town, do everything they want to, whatever, you have a certain hours that, uh, go back and forth and everything. And, uh, it might be that we could a, ask the manager to talk DOT about, see if they have any programs and projects available. Or if not, I was saying, we, I think we wouldn't have the five. Probably we could lease them for six months and turn them back in. I mean, I don't, but like you say, it would take a committee, it'd take a group or a study group, like you suggested, to look into it and see where we are and how we are, if it's durable. I don't even know if it's durable, but I think it's working up in any way. I think it's really, really neat.
I, I will, um, add that after you all had suggested this when we had our budget conversation, um, I asked Michelle to explore options to maybe have, um, some kind of shuttle as a pilot project for Dare Day, for Saturday of Dare Day weekend.
Yeah.
Um, to, to just see if, if we... To just see if we could secure a vendor that could come in and do it for us, and so that is something that she is working on. And then I've done some preliminary research, I've not done near the amount of research that I need to do, but we are, I am looking into what happened in Oak Ridge.
I'd forgotten all about it. There was a guy that was entered and asked, he asked me about it, I said, I don't know, why don't you pursue it? And he was a Simmons, the guy worked for BFC many years, 40 years in BFC? And he was asking me about it, and taking orders, concessions.
Yes.
And I told him, followed up, and I'd forgotten all about it, to be true.
He's talking to you, yeah. Is he still interested? Yeah. I mean, talking to everybody, I told him, talked to Melissa about it, because we had discussed with him to talk about power through the mission, you know, but he is interested.
Well, we can pursue it, and that's up to the Board. It's a board of light, and just pursue it, just pursue it, and do it, for somebody as well.
Melissa, would this be a project that, you know, that grant that Chuck was talking about as part of the Downtown Associates? It's coming up really quickly, and we talked about playgrounds and things like that. I mean, if there's some fast funding, maybe we could...
I will check with Michelle.
I appreciate you bringing up Mr. Keeney's comments, 'cause I totally agree with you and him, that he's certainly on the right track with all of us.
Yeah. I'll check with Michelle.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of figuring out, you know, a tram, something, some kind of way we can move people around, I wonder if that would be something that we could actually get some funding for right away?
Well, Jamie and I were talking sort of back and forth in the meeting, but the clean air funds, too, like, there's a lot of grants that are kind of tricky to tap into, but golf carts, battery-powered, solar-powered, like, that's sort of the golden gem.
Well, it'd be pretty neat, see, two or three of them, paint, paint or yellow and whatever, welcome to Manio, order them, and see what happens.
Yeah.
All right, is anything else?
I'm sorry, I have one other thing.
Go ahead.
Just one short thing.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to thank staff so much for the initiation of making, yes, brightening up Illuminating Town Hall, right? And also removing all the plexiglass that was such a barrier. I don't think any of us could hear or see each other.
I can't, I can't hear.
You still can't hear me now?
Oh, I can hear you now, I can hear you.
Oh, I know.
No, I can hear you, not good.
Yeah, I know. Such an improvement, and you all jumped in, what was it, a week ago or something? We discussed it? Thank you, thank you, thank you. And you can actually see and hear, so I appreciate that. So a good beginning.
I said I wasn't a fan of the barriers, I'm still COVID shy, but it's okay.
Oh, you were a fan of...
We can put them back. I won't mind, I won't take it personally.
Don't be coughing on me, you dog.
I didn't ask them to put them up. I didn't ask them to put them up. It's up to me to stay away from other people, not me to stay away from people.
That's right.
All right, is anything else coming forward?
We should just say to all the town staff, townspeople that are gonna watch this, because there are surprisingly more than a handful that watch, we are going to work on our ordinances.
Yeah, we got, well, I think, I think our attorney attested that, and I am not gonna get him in trouble, not attorney, or the planner, I mean, the manager.
Same thing.
You're gonna find out, you're gonna find out when you look into our ordinances, everyone of them just about are illegal. If somebody took us to court, they would win.
We're very happy you're here, Ben.
Yeah.
All right, anything else coming forward? All right, when do we meet again?
At 6:30.
Can we have a motion to adjourn until May 4th at 6:30? Okay, motion?
Still moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's second, we adjourn until May 4th at 6:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We stand adjourned.